All right, at seven o'clock, call the meeting to order and let's stand for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Welcome everyone on this February two twenty 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 day. We're excited to have everyone here, but we are really excited about having my friend Kathy Nash, who serves as our family consumer science department chair and is the teacher educator academic coordinator. Please welcome Kathy, if you would stand up please, and her twenty-one and her twenty-one teacher educator academy students to our meeting tonight. Stand up. I see some future teachers in there, so remember LSR seven when you're done with your school. May I have an adoption of the agenda, please?
I move to approve the agenda as presented. Second.
No questions? All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Great, thank you. Dr. Miller, superintendent's report.
Thank you, President Dome. First, we'd like to congratulate Lee Summit High School's Daniella Arctikin, Ivy Liu, and Josh Raywall, who have been named National Merit Scholar finalists. Congratulations also to Lee Summit West Rebecca Hartwig, Lee Summit High School Alexis Jones, and Lee Summit North Riley Mansell for being selected to represent R seven at the Missouri Fine Arts Academy this summer in Springfield, Missouri. The National Interscholastic Athletic Administrators Association has recognized Tracy Bertanson, activities and athletic director at Lee Summit High School, as a certified athletic administrator. Coach Bertanson's certification means that all three R seven athletic and activities directors in R seven have this unique distinction. The district has commenced its informational bond campaign to help educate voters about its 224 million no tax rate increase bond issue. Part of that campaign is a presentation series called the Speakers Bureau. If your organization would like to schedule a presentation about the bond issue, you may contact the district's public relations department. Those looking for more information can visit lsr7.org slash bond and find timelines, videos, and project details and more. This year, the district has planned two community engagement nights around two important topics, vaping and dyslexia. Blue Valley's Dr. Chris Jensen led a community conversation about the health impacts of vaping on January thirtieth. The district is planning a K six parent dyslexia night next Thursday, February twenty-seventh, here at Stansberry Leadership Center. In the area of governance, the Missouri Legislative Session is well underway with several education bills expected to be debated in the coming weeks that will directly impact public education. The district's 2020 legislative platform has been updated on the district's website, and we encourage those who want to keep track of the bills that would impact LSR seven to continue signing up for our R seven advocacy newsletter. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we will begin with presentations and recognitions. Jackie?
Thank you. Tonight, I have the pleasure of introducing the Meadow Lane Elementary Principal, Dr. Cheryl Cochran, Assistant Principal Micah Fritz, Ryan Burke, Smart Lab Coach, and several Meadow Lane students who will share with us information about their individual school's Kaufman Grant. The team also will demonstrate their learning through the Kaufman-funded Project-Based Learning Initiative, our new Smart Lab, their new Smart Lab, and the positive impact it is having on our students. Welcome Bengals.
Hi. I'm on, I'm on. All right. Good evening. Welcome all. Want to take a very quick second here to introduce our team. This is Mr. Fritz, our assistant principal. We have Mr. Burke here as our Smart Lab coach and teacher. And then students, we're just going to pass the mic and you can introduce and say your name and your grade if you would.
My name is Christopher and I am from sixth grade.
My name is Preston. I'm from third grade.
I am Tatum and I am from fourth grade.
I'm Vivian. I'm from fourth grade.
My name's Betty Cott and I'm from fourth grade.
My name's Grace and I'm from fourth grade.
There we go. All right, we would love to introduce you to our Kaufman grant and give you a little information about that and what we've been doing at Meadow Lane. We were awarded this grant this year, and I'm going to tell you that this is not an easy thing to get. You have to have three years of quality MAP scores that are higher than the state average, and that must be a Title One school, and Meadow Lane met all those areas. Also, you must include innovative practices, how to close the achievement gap, and focus on student learning, engagement, and 21st century skills. We also have also decided to focus on our project-based learning, and those 21st skills are the collaboration, problem-solving, perseverance, multidisciplinary learning, and enhanced engineering. So what does this look like in Meadow Lane? That says a lot, but what's it really look like? This grant was for $212,000. And with that, we are focusing on professional development with project-based learning. It provides for our full-time certified staff member, that's Mr. Burke, and he is our teacher and our coach. And every single student, once a week, gets the opportunity to work in the Smart Lab. And with that, they work with authentic learning, collaboration, hands-on learning, and it really mirrors that philosophy at MIC, so we are very excited about that. Smart Lab actually stands for Science, Mathematics, Applied Arts, Research, and Technology. With that, we've working on our, these are the main parts of project-based learning. You can see those up there. That's that challenging problem, questions, authenticity. That's huge. That's things that students are really actually engaged in and want to know about. And another big part of that is reflection, where they critique it, listen to the reflection, and then they go back and they change and revise their projects. So a few examples, very quick examples. I'll let you take a look at those, but every single grade, K through six, are working on project-based learning in our Smart Lab. We want to take a quick second here to highlight third grade. Preston is representing third grade, but part of the projects that third grade's been working on is a tiny house project, which is really big on HGTV if you haven't watched that. And this is why he and his teammates and his classmates learned, why do people want to live in a tiny house? And then they had to design one out of Legos. And they interviewed community members and found out what would they want in their small house, learning about blueprints. Then they actually learned how to use CAD, which is amazing for third graders to use that program. I know that some of our older kids probably use that. And they've made 3D models. So we have a quick video here. I want to show you how this actually looks. So this is a third grade design, and then on the right-hand side, you can see the pictures there. And that's where they did their Lego drawing, their design on their graph paper, and then we actually printed it out on a 3D printer. And all that's funded through our Kaufman grant. And Preston will be able to answer any questions you have later on. And so we're going to move right on. We're going to look at fourth grade. Fourth grade's been learning about energy, where it comes from, and finding ways that we waste it and ways that maybe Meadow Lane could start conserving some energy. They've focused their projects on videos, intercom announcements, skits, posters, and then we have a quick little video here that highlights our girls. Can you hear it?
Our janitor, Mr. Harrison, has to take this out into the dumpster fourteen times a day. This huge trash can gets filled and has to be taken out. And then our lunch lady spends $3,000 to $4,000 on our food. And more than half of it that we eat gets thrown away because all we do is talk and talk. So we have an idea for that. You could, if you're wanting to get something, if all your slots are filled on your tray, don't get anything else. If you're getting a napkin, only get one. Get more if you spill. If you're going to get a snack, save a square open, because if you're overlayering or you're just stacking stuff up, you are getting way too much. Because we all know we love to talk and talk at lunch, because we're not allowed to talk in class. So be careful and don't waste your food.
And there you go. Be careful and don't waste food. There you go. Fourth grade. Nicely done, ladies. All right, let's go on. And fifth grade did a really great project. They actually studied how you build bridges and learned about the truss and developing and designing. It was amazing. And their project was to build a bridge for a railroad company. And so we've got some quick videos here of our fifth graders. Oh, so they had to measure how wide it was. So the great thing is, is that every time you make a mistake, you learn from it. And so this has been an amazing addition to our school. Sixth grade, Christopher, real quick, we are going to share some of their things they've been working on. They're learning how to code and make their own video games. So you can see how the coding actually moves there. The kids program the computer and tell it to slide over, and then here's what it looks like. And these are sixth graders. Pretty impressive. So in summary, just want to say thank you, and we're extremely fortunate to have received this grant because these are the things I know that are board priorities. It grows right along with our Portrait of Graduate, and we are hoping that this will be a model that can be implemented at other schools one of these days. And because we know that if our kids love it and are learning a lot from it, so will everyone else. Do you have any questions for our students?
Okay, I'll ask one. Maybe we could just get each student to say like just one sentence about what they liked best about working on these projects.
Definitely the satisfaction of having a finished game playable.
Building a 3D printer, like, how to say it? Yeah, designing my house.
The time it takes to actually make a video, learning how like you have to have a script and editing it.
I enjoyed the memories we made while making it and the fun times we had.
I liked how we got to work together, and I also like how we persevered even whenever it was hard.
I like that we got to show our creativity in our own videos.
Thank you.
Great question. All right. Thank you, guys. Thanks for letting us share.
Is there, is there some of this that'll carry over, like the kids that are in fourth, fifth? Will they carry some of their skill sets, so to speak, or some of their responsibility into the next grade?
All of our projects build on each other. Oh, sorry. Sorry. All of our products build on each other. So even in kindergarten, they're designing houses for the three little pigs and testing them out, like which is the strongest and why. So that's pretty, that's pretty in-depth for a kindergartner. And then going all the way up to third grade, now they're designing their tiny houses, so yes.
Thank you all for your work. Thank you.
All right, our next presentation discussion, David's already, Dr. Sharp's already up here, got the microphone. So Dr. Sharp, principal at Pleasantly Middle School, will feature students from their web program. It stands for Where Everybody Belongs, cares, and the robotics team as well. Thank you, Dr. Sharp. Sporting the colors, I see, too.
Yes, sir, thank you. Yes, have our students, we're going to have our students come on up. As they're making their way up, these fantastic Tigers are making their way, and we've brought quite a few of them here. I'd like to say thank you to each of their parents that brought them here tonight. Quite proud of them. Wow, we could spotlight many a program at PLMS. I am particularly proud of these two here. One of them serves for ten years, and the other one, which is pretty new to us, but we've been, we've been doing it for a while. This year at PLMS, you'll see up here real quick, and I've been challenged to be short, so I will be. Because it's always hard for me. Passion, purpose, pride is our motto this year. We, we have wristbands for all of our kids that we done to bring it together. It's called hashtag Tigers Together. That's our theme. And then kind of the core of what we do there is that we're going to deliver on the promise of trying to provide every middle school kid an outstanding educational experience, which I think you'll see from these presentations. So I'm going to introduce my sponsors who work tireless hours with these youngsters every day. I've got Nancy, Laura, and Christine, and I believe we're going to start, are we starting with robotics? We'll start with robotics, so I'll let Laura and the team start with robotics. We'll go from there.
Thank you for having us tonight. Christine's coming. I just want to point out some really key people to our program that are not listed technically under sponsors for us, but without them, we wouldn't have this program. And that is Wyatt Durgan, who is our FRC coach at Lee Summit High School. And then Matthew, team-driven, yes, and Matthew Stropes, who is a parent volunteer for us that helps us with our programming. Just a little bit of background, and then I have some students that are going to actually explain kind of everything we do, but our team is a completely a middle school team. And so we are competing in a situation against students in seventh through twelfth grades. So most of the time when we compete, we are competing against high school teams. And it's a big challenge. Our kids come in, and even just yesterday, we heard from one of our students that the misconception is that these kids are handed a kit that is then like a snap-together kit, and they put it together and go from there. And that is not at all true for this. They are competing in the first technology competition, which means that they are building, designing, programming their robots. It's very similar to the ones that the high school does on a smaller scale. And you can see they brought the two that we are currently in progress with. It's a never-ending cycle here for us, but currently, we have twenty-seven students on two teams and are at PLMS, and so it's a pretty big program, and we're super excited about that. Our competition season starts early September, usually the Saturday after Labor Day, and it runs typically until the end of February, unless you're lucky enough to make it to the state competition. And our Tiger Steam Black is going on to state this year. Woo-hoo! We're super excited. So, and they'll explain a little bit about how you do that. So they will be going to state competition on March seventh in Rolla, Missouri. And so they're progressing to the state competition and hoping from there, we get to go to Worlds in Houston. So speakers, if you'll step back behind here so you can use the microphone, that would be great, and we'll let you kind of explain how the whole process works.
Okay, so my name is Sam Linz. I'm going to be talking to you about kind of how robotics got started. So I'm in eighth grade. This is my second year doing FTC, and I really enjoyed it. So robotics actually started with an Eagle Scout project from actually my brother, Jack Linz. And it originally just started with eight people just kind of hanging out and doing the things in robotics. But they had so much fun, and people heard about how much fun it was, so it kind of blew up. And now we had so many people that we had to make two teams, our Tiger Steam Black and our Tiger Steam Gold. And also, yeah, so now we have those two teams, and this year, we had over seventy applicants. So it's pretty big to go from eight people to over seventy applicants, so it's pretty cool. And I'm going to hand it over to Adam.
Hi. Hi, my name's Adam Brunz. I'm in eighth grade. This is my first year on robotics. I'm on Tiger Steam Black. So I'm going to talk a little about the processes of building, not exactly how we built it, but the processes. So we started with four motors, four wheels. That's it. From there, we built everything on those robots. So the first thing we did once we got in is we came in and we watched our game reveal. So once we watched that, we saw the challenges we need to face, and we went to prototyping. Once we prototyped everything, we started kind of voting on what we wanted to do with our robots. From there, we went to our first competition. We came back. We thought we could have done better, so we came back and we was like, okay, what do we need to change to do better to our next one? And we came back, and we almost did a full scrap of our robot. It was, it was pretty crazy. So we changed that, and then we went to our next competition, and we progressed to state. So I'm going to hand it over to Christian. Talk about programming.
Hi, I'm Christian Brock. I'm in seventh grade, and this is my first year on the robotics team. We started out the year, well, everybody else was We started out the year, while everybody else was working and prototyping the robot, we were, we were learning about coding with Java from Coach Matt. And once we, yeah, and I think that was a great opportunity for people to be able to learn that because it is really fun and an amazing thing to do. Once we were fluent enough in programming, we were able to start actually programming the robot. There are two types of programs with robotics. There's teleop, which is using all the stuff on the robot for the driver to control the robot. And then there's autonomous, which is all programming, get a set path for the robot to move during 30 seconds at the beginning of the match. Now I'm going to pass it off to Jackson, net for drive team.
Hi, my name's Jackson. I've been doing FTC for two years now. I'm an eighth grader and I'm a builder and driver. I'm the driver for Tiger Steam Gold. And I've been doing, like I joined robotics because I thought it'd be fun to do and turns out it was. I love robotics now. And so I was a driver, but this drive spot came with a lot of cost. I had to like learn how to drive the robot after we got it built and coded and everything. So I learned how to drive. And then we put like everybody on our team that wanted to learn how to drive on like a practice match so they would get to learn how the controls work and everything like that. And then they would be put in a practice match to learn who scored the most points, who was like really good at it, who had potential to become really good. And then the ones with potential like got to practice a little bit more than the ones that are really good. And then they went like against, both the robots went against each other for like the final drive tryouts. And then so I, we still had like two drivers at our first match. And so we kind of like did actual matches with both our drivers. And so we did this so we would alternate matches, but then we decided that like we would just use me as a full-time driver and stuff. And our strategy for matches is that we would go around and talk with other teams so they know how, what our robot does and what they do. That way we can learn and have the best match possible. So that way we can hopefully go to state, which sadly did not happen for my team. But Black Team luckily got to go, and so that was a great experience. And so I'm going to pass it off to our outreach team.
I think that we're going to have to cut it because of time. But we want you to know that we are so proud of these kids. They've worked so hard, endless hours. And it definitely takes village. It has taken so many people to help. And we appreciate our parent support, our administration, and all of our mentors. So we're very proud of these kids.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Hi, I'm Nancy Bartlett. I'm one of the co-sponsors of WebCARES over at Pleasantly Middle School. And I've got a couple of our leaders here with us today. Web stands for Where Everyone Belongs. And this is truly a program where everyone belongs at the middle school level. It's a national mentoring program specifically designed for middle schoolers. And like Dr. Sharp said, we are so proud. This is our 10th year of running this program where eighth grade leaders are mentoring seventh grade advisory students. Super proud of the kids in the program. I'm going to hand off the microphone and each one of our leaders is going to say a couple of words.
On Transition Day, WebCARES leaders play an important role in leading the new seventh grade class through getting to know you activities.
Throughout the school year, this program gives eighth graders an opportunity to practice, develop, and refine their public speaking skills as they guide seventh graders through team-building activities.
Plus, when new students arrive at PLMS, WebCARES leaders show the new students around the building, meeting their teachers, and walking them through the new schedule.
For me, WebCARES means a place where I get to connect with seventh graders more. Last year I attended Summit Lakes and we didn't have WebCARES there. And I remember on Transition Day, it was hard, like it took a longer time to connect with teachers. But as a eighth grade mentor, I could, when I see that seventh graders are, it's easier for them to connect with similar, like similar ages, it feels good to be part of a mentoring program.
To me, what WebCARES is, is just a way to help out students a lot whenever like they just come to a new school when they don't know where to go. And for us, it's just like to help them out a lot more than what other schools usually do.
One reason why I decided to join WebCARES is because when I was an incoming seventh grader, I was kind of stressed and overwhelmed. And one of my, and our WebCARES leaders helped me feel very welcome and less overwhelmed. And because of that, I wanted to help the new incoming seventh graders.
I know you can see the bright colors of all of our T-shirts from the front, but each year we have a motto that we put on the back of our T-shirts. Don't move because I'm reading from your backs, okay? Thank you. And it is, and all of the colors that I am inside have not even been invented yet. And that really speaks to the 10 years, our first 10 years of WebCARES. And we are very hopeful for even more. So thank you for our administrator, thank you Board of Education for having us out here tonight, I appreciate it.
Sorry, I, I needed wait time to remember the question here. I did have a question for the robotics, Dr. Sharp, sorry. How many parts are on those robots? Seriously?
Team? As you can see, that's not an ordinary robot that they're built.
I understand, that's why I'm curious. That's why I'm curious.
I've hung out with them a little bit at the build.
I, I wanted to almost challenge the board to say, let's all take a guess, but in the interest of time, I'm just curious.
I have absolutely no idea.
Well, then my guess is as good as yours then, right? So. Do you have thousands? Would you say? Close to a thousand? Those are all parts? And then lastly, how many hours do you guys spend working on the robots?
Okay, so we do it like three times a week and we go there from like 2:30 to 5:30 every night, so three hours every night.
Perfect. All right, that's, I was just curious, I appreciate it, thanks.
Jackie?
I just think this is awesome to see what you guys are doing with robotics. You guys are going to be feeding into those high school programs that are so well-recognized around the country. And this is probably the first room I've been in in over a month where it's not all red, but I sure like seeing the black and gold.
Mike?
Dr. Sharp? How many years have you had robotics at the middle school? 10 years with web, right? But this is.
Four years for robotics. And I believe we, we compete with FTC, which is First Technical, which is one under FRC. And our other two schools are First Lego League. All three schools have it. We compete with this, this one here, at that level.
Excellent.
Yes.
Thank you so much. You're looking sharp tonight.
The R7 Board of Education has designated February as Lee Summit R7 Citizens Advisory Committee, CAC Month, in honor of this highly-involved team of volunteers comprised of parents, community members, and staff. Established in 1952 by longtime superintendent Dr. Bernard Campbell, the CAC has continued to focus on its mission to facilitate communication, advise, and partner with the R7 Board of Education Superintendent and community to ensure a successful and innovative school system that maximizes each student's potential. Tonight, we have invited CAC members to attend and come forward. And we'll be presenting all members in attendance with a certificate to express our appreciation. CAC Chairperson is Kent Kirby and the Assistant Chair is Elaine Blummel. So if you all would make your way forward for recognition. Oh, you're good, you're good. So again, on behalf of the board, we appreciate all your time and effort and participation in this process. It's very, very, very valued. Thank you so much. And then I'm going to ask, and say a special thank you and ask that you also stand in recognition for all of the numerous teachers, support staff, building administrators, district administration, and our architect and engineer partners involved in the process this year and who continue to work in refining plans for the April 2020 bond issue project. We really appreciate all your time you've spent as a staff member too. So if you're here and have participated on the CAC or provided support to them, would you please stand to be recognized as well? Come on, don't be shy.
3.04. During February, our school district recognizes and celebrates the valuable work of our career and technical educators, or CTE, as part of the National Career and Technical Education Month. Thanks to these teachers, our students are better prepared for their future. Students, employees, and families appreciate the efforts of career and technical educators and the positive influence that they have on our young people. Shannon Booth, LSR7 Career Education and Project Lead the Way coordinator, is here on behalf of all career and technical educators. Shannon has been with the district eight years and for four years as a business and information technology teacher at Lee Summit High School and four years as the CTE and PLTW facilitator for the district. Thank you very much for being here tonight.
3.05. National Career and Technical Education Month. Oh, excuse me, National PTA Founder's Day. Each February, Lee Summit R7 celebrates PTA Founder's Day and recognizes the significant contributions of our PTA volunteers. Thanks to our active PTA members, Lee Summit schools are better able to serve our almost 18,000 students. For close to 120 years, PTA members throughout our nation have donated their time and talents to improve the life of each child while also enhancing communities. In addition to the individual volunteer efforts within our schools, PTA members provide resources for families and are strong advocates for public schools. Tonight, we will be honoring our PTA members in recognition of the difference these volunteers make in our school. Megan Presnell, Lee Summit Council and Underwood Elementary President, please come forward. Kimberly Wieg Leitner, Hawthorne Hill Elementary President. Tiffany Ippolito, Sunset Valley Elementary President. Stephanie Kane Parish, Lee Summit North High School President. And Anissa Larson, Highland Park Elementary President. Ladies, thank you very much for everything you do for our schools.
February 9th through the 15th is School Board Recognition Week in Missouri. The goal of School Board Member Recognition Week is to build awareness and understanding of the important function an elected Board of Education has in communities and schools. Missourians benefit every day from the dedicated energies and countless hours devoted by a group of more than 3,600 men and women from communities across the state. School Board members are elected by local constituents and do not receive compensation for their tireless efforts, which include numerous meetings, involvement with community groups, and countless hours of research and study. Volunteer Board members provide a strong community connection between school districts and patrons while also serving as advocates for students and public education. Thank you for your dedication, service, and commitment to LSR7 community.
Thank you, Dr. Miller. All right, we are going to move to Section 4, Comments from the Public. And we have Carrie and Michelle Ellis here tonight to speak to us.
Hello, everybody, I'm Michelle Ellis. I am a senior at Lee Summit North High School. I'm also the captain of the North Side Step Team. In 2018, we won first place for the Step Show Competition at Lee Summit North. And in 2019, we got runner-up. But this year, we want to take back the crown. You know? I noticed that no one on the board has come to a step competition, but I also realized we haven't really invited any of you guys. So this year, I want to personally invite you guys to come to the Step Show that's happening, March 27th at 6:00 PM at Lee Summit North High School.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Michaela Nelson and I am also a senior and I am also a captain on the Lee Summit North Step Team. And I would also like to extend an invitation to you to not just our Step Show, our Black History Program, where we will be performing at that as well. And that is when we, we noticed within our school specifically that there isn't much of recognition towards Black excellence or Black history. And if it is, it's a very short period. So we take a certain day where we just have a list of everything and what our school doesn't usually provide. Usually more so of a celebration rather than a lesson. So I would like to extend that invitation to you as well and to also anyone else here who is interested. Our Black History Program will be February 27th. The admission is free, it will be at our school, and it will start around 12:50. So if you would like a really good seat, then I would suggest coming between 12:30 or 12:40. Thank you.
Is that in the gym?
PAC, but for both the Step Show and the.
We appreciate the personal invitation. That is fun. Thank you. All right, we are going to move down to Section 4, Board Reports. And Mr. Allen, would you like to start?
All right. I have a few things that I'll try to wrap up pretty quick, but I'm on the Chamber of Government Relations Committee, but that was postponed due to weather. Another casualty of the weather. LSR7 team, Lee Summit met on the January 30th. And I will take a moment to touch on a number of things because we had roughly 1,630 participants in our employee survey. So roughly 60% of all of our employees participated in the survey this year. So we're taking some very diligent time to process that feedback. We touched on a number of things during the meeting, class size. We spent some time hearing a report from Kelly Services about employee staffing and the fill rate. And LSR7 enjoys really a high percentage there across the metropolitan area. Had a financial overview with Mr. Wes Metz. HR update with Dr. Del Sam. And we learned a few things from a delayed start because of snow. And the first time we have a delayed start was the late start day on a Wednesday. So it was a nice culmination of a variety of things going on. So we learned a lot really, really quickly. June 10th, a couple of us were in Jefferson City for the, June, wow, hello, January 10th. the June, wow, hello, January 10th. Spell check, yeah. From about 9:00 to 4:00, Ms. Clark and I were there, Board Member Clark and I were down there for the Missouri School Board Association Legislative Forum. And again, a strong dialogue led by the MSBA about a variety of subjects, not the least of which is probably the most important, was really retention, recruitment, salary structures of employees in public school. Also talked about challenges of rural and urban districts, strong comprehensive discussions around pending legislation and proposed legislation that will impact public schools. Yeah, and then a variety of other topics that really MSBA drills down very, very heavily. Team Lee Summit was supposed to be again, June, goodness, January 13th, it's no day. So it was postponed to next week, so we'll have that. And then here we are, January 20th. And one real quick note, I missed an opportunity. I told Linda this, Ms. Ismer this last month. We had a recognition for our public, for our transportation department and how much they do in a very selfless manner, and what I did not do at the time was offer up a term that they should, should, should really anchor, and that is they truly are our director of first impressions for our students every day, and they help set the tone for our students in a very positive manner. And the folks that we've had out in our segment of the city at Rantry have been excellent, and you know, this year as well. So I just, I'm sorry I did not mention that last month, but those ladies and men could not be better. So thanks to them.
Thank you, Mike.
Okay, thank you. First of all, I just wanted to say that I had the pleasure of speaking with the Educator Teachers Academy students a few weeks ago, and it was, it was also a day where there was an issue in one of the schools, so we didn't actually have all of them there at the same time, but that was okay because the group that was there, they were fabulous listeners, and they asked some very good questions, and I feel really good about this group of students, and I hope that many of them do go ahead and go on to become educators, because they seem like they do really care about our, our students. It's just good to see you all here tonight, and thank you for being here and learning. I'd also like to report on the Lee Summit Educational Foundation. Each year, the Chamber Board members with the highest attendance select nonprofits within its membership to receive a donation on behalf of the Chamber. And on Wednesday, Carson Graff and the Chamber presented the foundation with a donation. So Cheryl Frankie accepted that check on behalf of our foundation, so we'd like to thank Carson Graff, who is on our foundation board and is a good Chamber Board member and attends regularly for, for doing that. And we'd also like to invite each of you to join us for the foundation's 21st Annual Taste of Lee Summit on Saturday evening, March 7. It's shaping up to be a wonderful evening to benefit our students. Tickets are still available. I think we've sold more than 500 tickets already, and we can sell about 600. So if you'd like to attend that evening, be sure and go online to Lee Summit Educational Foundation's website and secure your tickets soon. It's a wonderful evening with many great restaurants there, great silent and live auction, lots of fun games that we play in the middle of all those, all intent on raising money for our students. And the Lee Summit School District does go out to our students via various methods. We've helped pay for Chromebooks for several years, and we've also provided many peak grants to our teachers, our teaching staff that provides projects in the classroom. So we hope to see each of you there. Mike already mentioned that the Chamber of Commerce Government Relations Committee didn't meet, so we don't have a report on that this month. Thank you.
Thank you. Judy?
Just briefly, several of the board members, we were in attendance at the cooperating school districts, a meeting at the end of January, and we had visits from some of our legislators, but also the Commissioner of Education was at that meeting and shared some words with us, as well as two state board members. And one of the things that particularly struck me from the report from the two state board members was the focus at the state level on the issue that Mike mentioned in terms of teacher attraction and retention, because they're seeing that issue statewide. And so I thought that was very positive to hear that kind of discussion happening at the state level between our board members. So I look forward to their discussions, and I think that's going to continue to be a topic that all of us school boards and school districts will be facing and dealing with. So that's all I have to report.
Thank you. Jackie?
Thank you. This week, I was the substitute for Dennis Smith, who is not with us here this evening, for the Finance Committee meeting with Mr. Murdoch. Then I also missed one of the two, but attended the one last night, the Equity and LSR-7 Groups Meeting, and was able to share with them a little bit about some of our upcoming bond, the upcoming bond issue. And Mr. Murdoch was there as well and also provided some of that enlightenment, which he may want to expand on. And then, as Mr. Allen mentioned, I was at the Legislative Day, and it was particularly insightful to see the new Senate Chair of the Senate Education Committee. It was, this is a person, her name is Senator Olafland, and I actually have some things in common with her in professional life, and I think the entire group and many of you all share the district's concern about the expansion of charter schools in our state. And that is one of the issues that is a priority of the new Senate Chairwoman, and we were, we learned that she has not had the opportunity to visit a charter school. So I was able to invite her to our district. I've mentioned that to Dr. Miller yesterday morning, but I'm sharing that with you all now, and invited her to come see the great things that are going on in this public school district and understand the programs and really the lack of need for that kind of education option in this school district and, and those that surround us that also have a high level of excellence. The other issue that I was able to discuss with several legislators and beyond our footprint is the proposed TIF reform that came out of the Senate. That was attached to a larger bill, and I believe it was 580, and it is over in the House, and it has an amendment that gives school districts a bit more authority in the TIF approval process. And that's, that's the nugget behind it. So we'll be watching that very closely. It was approved unanimously on the Senate floor, that particular amendment, and we would like to see that amendment remain in the bill as it progresses through the House. So there'll be more conversations about that. In addition to those topics, I was able to also have a catch-up with our, the Chairman of our State Board, which is Charlie Shields, and he represents the sixth Congressional District on that particular board, and he appreciates our engagement in that Legislative Day. Finally, I want to also mention that I had the opportunity, I was invited to join some of the folks who are representing the City of Lee Summit or who represented the City of Lee Summit at the Missouri Municipal League Capitol Hill Day, which followed our Legislative Day for school board members, and was able to talk to both Mayor Carson Ross of Blue Springs and Mayor Baird here of Lee Summit, and a few of the state representatives and some of the city leadership on the staff side. So it was, it's been busy with the legislature hitting its busiest part of the year, so we'll have more next month.
All right. Thank you. And Brian?
Just a couple of things. One, I did attend the Finance Meeting yesterday morning, which I will give the report for here in just a second, and I warned President Doan that I was going to say one quick little personal thing as a thank you to Bernard Campbell Middle School. January 25th and 26th, they hosted the Crossroads Invitational Wheelchair Basketball Tournament for over a dozen teams there at Bernard Campbell. And then I promised the kids that are on the team, because we have many from Lee Summit who are on the two teams, an older team and a younger team. At 4 o'clock this afternoon, both teams got invites to the National Basketball Tournament, which means for the younger kids, that's they're in the top 16 teams in the country, and the older kids are in the top 32 teams in the country. It's not the most exciting destination this year's, it's in Wichita. Last year, it was in a much better location. No disrespect to Wichita, that's where my in-laws live, but, but anyway, the kids found out at 6:30 tonight because they're practicing at Longview Farm, actually. And so I wanted to make sure that the district knew we sincerely appreciate the support that the teams have been given here within the district. So thank you very much.
I just have to say, friends don't let friends go to Kansas, but go ahead. I have two reports, and the district's Health and Wellness Committee met yesterday, and we are in the process to verify our practices on accordance with the state requirements and aligning with the Missouri learning standards. So I am learning a lot on that committee. And then with my Lee Summit Cares hat, they're hosting a youth advisory board, which we like to call GAB, and it's a recruitment party. You guys are all seniors, aren't you? Younger friends. It's this coming Tuesday, and it's at Prodeo Center. It's tacos, games, and learn about GAB, and of course, RSVP is needed. So thank you very much, everyone, for attending all your committees. We are going to move down to item number six, and I'll let Ryan take it away.
So here comes the Finance Report, and Dennis is really going to be upset because this is the shortest Finance Report we have had in months. And so while he's in Florida enjoying 70-degree temperatures, we'll do the quick Finance Report. So we will need a transfer of $2,7149.96 from the General Fund to the Special Revenue Fund to cover expenses for the month. Our investments through January total approximately $156.9 million. Revenue and expense report, our expense percentages are within expected budget parameters, and our current fund balance sits for January at 44.88 percent. The Aquatic Center has a packaged HVAC unit that provides conditioned air and dehumidification for the main pool area of the building. Currently, we cannot view this unit's operation as we no longer have support from the manufacturer. This item will allow our sole source bidding automation system contractor, Control Service Company, to control this unit directly, which is essentially a long way of saying we're going to be able to have better access and control of the controls at our aquatic center to a very large dehumidification unit. The construction and maintenance update, the Finance Committee reviewed updates on the following projects, woodland sewer improvements, never-ending, the Westview roof improvements, the Lee Summit West retaining wall improvements, and planning for future projects, though we were also updated that not a lot of movement on those because of weather over the last month. Purchase of distribution trucks, purchasing has been working on the purchase of two new trucks for distribution. One of the vehicles will be a refrigerated diesel truck, and the other will be a dry box diesel truck. These will replace a 2003 refrigerated truck unit that is not cool below 50 degrees and a 2012 electric truck that no longer runs. Board members, we have that in our packet coming up for decision. Two actions tonight that we need to do, 6.02 to approve the transfer of $2,7149.96 from the General Fund to the Special Revenue Fund.
Second. All right. Any questions? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
And 6.03 to approve the Treasurer's Report and payment of the bills.
Second. Judy, you have a question?
I do. I had asked the question earlier in the week about the variance in the percentage of revenue collected between this year and last year at this time. This year, it's at 69.24 percent in the operating funds, and last year it was at 75.38. And I think if I understand the explanation correctly, it had to do with delinquent tax collection. Is that accurate? So I guess my question would be, have we had communication with other districts in the Jackson County to see if they're experiencing that same type of, you know, collection variance between last year and this year?
At this time, I had not, but I will reach out to the other districts and find out. When I was doing the evaluation to see what the differences was, that was the thing that jumped out to me the most. Delinquent last year was, we were like a little over 7 million, and this year we'd only collected one. So we're looking into it to try to figure out if we're missing something, we send an email to the county to see if they were only currently paying the current tax, and they were holding on to the delinquent for a little period of time. We haven't received a response back yet.
I just would carry it as to if other, all school districts in Jackson County are having that same experience.
We'll be happy to look into that.
Great question, Judy. All right, we have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Great. Thank you. So items for decision. Can I get a motion?
I move to approve the Consent Agenda items as presented.
Do we have any questions? All right, seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Okay. And we have one item in item, in eight.
Before use the decision to purchase the distribution trucks, as Vice President Murdoch referenced. Happy to entertain any questions you may have.
Jackie?
I think the board needs to know that we had that discussion in Finance yesterday. We got a really long life out of the box truck. As I like to say, it's, it's one year older than my newest car, and I was impressed to see that it was 17 years old. And in the other vehicle with the electric source of power, it just didn't work out well for the district for long-term use. So this is, this is a timely decision.
Awesome. Thank you. Okay, no more discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? We had a motion.
Have it.
Okay, let's...
No, yeah, Dr. Miller, Dr. Miller commented first on that and said she'd answer questions. So I will make the motion. I move to...
Linda's usually right, so...
I move to approve the ratification of the purchase of two new distribution vehicles at the total cost to the district of $221,455.
All right, now that we have a second, do we have any other questions? All right. I will never, ever say that again, Linda. You are always good. All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Great. Thank you. Moving down to item number nine.
I move the board approve new contracts over 5,000 as presented in Consent Agenda Items 9.02 through 9.05.
Okay. It's been a second. Brian?
I just had one quick question on 9.04. How much do we charge to go to prom for our high school kids? See? Now I can put you on the spot. How much? Per person?
That's funny. All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. And now we're on to item number 10, which is the Personnel Report.
If you wouldn't mind, could you refresh by hitting F5 and look at the line item in red as the revision?
I move to approve the personnel transactions as presented and contracts issued.
Great. Thank you. Any comments?
You need to approve.
Dr. Del Sam, do you have any special announcements this evening?
Well, I do, once there's an approval, I believe, this evening. Thank you.
With no further comments, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Great. Now, Dr. Del Sam.
All right. With your approval of the... All right. With your approval of the Personnel Agenda this evening, I do have an announcement that I'm excited to make. Katie Bergen has joined the LSR-7 team last year as the District's Assistant Director of Public Relations, and with the board's approval of the agenda, she has been appointed the Executive Director of PR for the Lee Summit School District, beginning March 1st. So, Katie-
Awesome. Congratulations.
How you stand, Katie?
Someone take her picture.
And, yeah, we should. And just a little bit, we are familiar with Katie since she is part of our team. Prior to working in Lee Summit, Katie spent a decade as a journalist covering K-12 and higher education, as well as state and local government, business and sports business. Ms. Bergen currently is a member of Missouri School Public Relations Association, and she is a graduate of Mizzou School of Journalism. Go Tigers! And as I mentioned, she will officially begin her role as Executive Director of Public Relations, beginning March 1st.
Awesome. Well-deserved. Kim?
Yes, I just wanted to, for all of you folks out there in broadcast land and here in the room, you may not know this, but when you each receive those magazines periodically in the mail that say "Our Schools," this is the lady who is responsible for putting those together. So, I don't know about you, but this year, as we have received those, those, to me, have been fantastic. I've enjoyed seeing the spotlight on the kids, how the emphasis has always been on the kids. And so, thank you for that, Katie, and I know you'll do a great job. One other thing I'd like to say, too, is on our Personnel Report, yeah, I notice every month, I make a comment on this, but we have 10 more employees who have put in their intent to retire-
We do, yes.
-on this report. And I don't know what the standing list is adding up to at this point, but we are going to have quite a crew.
I was ready this month.
Okay, good.
Yes, yes. Our February report has added 16 retirements and resignations with that. So, our total is 34.
Yeah. That's a lot of years of experience right there.
It is. Historical knowledge here.
They will be greatly missed. Thank you.
Yeah. Our principals are doing a wonderful job of finding good, solid candidates for our kids to work with next year.
Awesome. Thank you. Mike?
Katie, you may get a unanimous vote to actually put you in an office with a natural light. But we need that appeal first, so we'll wait for that.
Jackie?
I just want to say, there's another side to those retirements. Folks, that's opportunity knocking, okay? There's always another side to some of us moving on in life.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Delsom. Item number 11, and 11.01, Special Education. Dr. Mathis, we're ready for your evaluation.
Thank you. As you know, I'm Stacy Mathis. I'm Executive Director for Special Services, and I am presenting the program evaluation that is presented on an annual basis. Every third year, that is in the form of a presentation. So, last year, you received my written report. I am also the guinea pig. We are trying out a new template that, this is something that we're trying for all of our instructional operations team, to use a similar template and format for some familiarity for the public and for the board to be informed about things that are happening within each department. So, be gentle. I'm the guinea pig. You also have received a written report that does summarize some of the information that will be shared in this report and presentation. That written report just kind of goes into more detail about some of the things that I'll highlight as part of the presentation tonight, since we're transitioning from an old format. Okay? Whoops. Okay. Our Special Services Program does encompass any student who meets eligibility for an IEP, an Individualized Education Program, and that begins from age 3 all the way up to age 21. We do serve students with disabilities at times until they turn 21, because that's more appropriate for their post-secondary plans. We also serve students, you've heard from Carrie Bame in recent months, with her program evaluation about several different students that we serve at Great Beginnings Early Education Center and in our satellite programs, that early childhood special education is only one of those programs at the early childhood level. The majority of our students do fall within kindergarten to grade 12 and 12-plus. So, our special education teachers and staff do provide specialized instruction for any of our students meeting eligibility at each school within the district, in both special education classrooms and general education classrooms, as well as some community-based instruction that takes place in some of our upper grades as we plan for post-secondary goals for students. This is just kind of a breakdown. We do receive, we report information on December the 1st of each school year to the state. It gives a breakdown of what our current numbers are as of December 1st, and that's part of the Core Data Report. This is a breakdown of that information over the past few years. You can see a subtotal for ages 5 in kindergarten through age 21, as well as a subtotal for early childhood. You can see that there is a little bit of a decrease between 2018 and 2019. A couple of reasons for that overall decrease are that we did change some speech eligibility. We didn't change. The state changed some eligibility criteria for speech at the early childhood level, so there is a little bit of a difference in the number of students who meet eligibility at that age group. We also have a little bit of an increase in ages 5 to 21 since last year, and we do believe that that's attributed to, at the elementary level, we have become more fluent in data collection and our intervention protocols, as we use in a response to instruction model for identification. And that allows us to serve students who are really demonstrating the greatest need versus just looking at a discrepancy model between their IQ score and their performance. We're able to use actual data that is ongoing and real-time happening for our students. Financial implication, this is something that we just want to be able to share within each department program evaluation. Wanted to point out that the Special Services Department is funded through federal, state, and local funds. That funding really does provide staffing, supplies, equipment, materials, any transportation costs, and sometimes we have very specialized transportation costs involved, and any other individualized needs we have for students. It is approximately $31 million in total, and that's kind of the breakdown of how much local, state, and federal money we operate within our budget. I do want to point out that about 94% of that $31 million is in salaries and benefits alone. Our program goal during 2019, after we reviewed our data last year, was really to take a look at how we could review and refine our inclusive practices for students, with IEPs really looking at how we could increase access and opportunities for all of our students to have more within general education curriculum and access to peers. This is in alignment with Board Priority 1, which is about increasing achievement of every child through a focus on student well-being, innovative practices, and equity in program design and implementation. Also, it's aligned to our CSIP Goal 3, Part B, Action Plan B, which is about students demonstrating achievement as measured by identified targets at the district elementary and secondary levels, and meeting unique needs of diverse learners through a well-identified system of support and extension for each of our seven students. We are, we have this year taken the data from last year's report and really taken a look at our profile data, which is publicly available through the state. We receive that after state assessment scores come back from the previous school year, and it gives us a breakdown. And some of the data that I'll share today comes directly from that report. We then take that information to really look deeply at what's going on in special education within our department, and what are the things that we need to focus on. Inclusive practices was one of the things that we looked at from our data last year. We really took a look at our state assessment data, our educational environments data. You might think about placement as a location or a place that people go, but in special education terminology, the placement category is actually how much time they spend in a specific educational environment, whether it be special education or general education. We also take a look at graduation rate and identification and eligibility criteria data, and discipline data in addition to that. Our first graph that I want to show is educational environments data. The top graph shows educational environment students served inside the regular classroom greater than or equal to 80% of the time, and then those served between 40 and 79% of the time. Those are just categories within an IEP that are selected, and each IEP team is making that decision with parents and guardians as part of that IEP team to determine how much time a student requires specialized instruction, and in which setting that would be most appropriate to meet their needs. Within that, you can see there has been a slight decrease in the amount of time students have been served within the regular classroom, and a slight increase in that between 40 and 79% of the time, as compared to the state, which has stayed fairly close together. But you can see a slight decrease and a slight increase for that as well. One thing that we have really been looking at is that we just received our new ELA core resource for the elementary level. That's something that we're really taking a look at, what we can do differently to support our students on IEPs. Before, I think a lot of our students really needed some replacement instruction outside of that classroom, because there wasn't a common resource to align our services and supports to. I think we will see, over time, that change. We've provided access and opportunity to our special education teachers this year, as we've been really doing robust professional development in that collaborative classroom resource. In addition to math, we've provided access to the Greg Tang trainings as well, and so that's something that we do believe we'll see a change over time in the ability to serve kids a little bit differently, and supplement and specialize that instruction, now that we have a core to kind of anchor that instruction to. In addition, you'll see on the lower graph, that is students who are served inside the regular classroom less than 40% of the time, or in a separate facility, and those are students with more severe disabilities, more significant disabilities, that require almost full-time specialized instruction to be successful and make progress on their goals. This is a graph showing our identification data, incidence rates, and really, that's a total district enrollment compared to the total IEP count. Are the first two bars you see there, that really shows what that comparison is. And the important things to note about this graph is it takes different eligibility criteria areas across the bottom, which are not something that we set criteria for, but each state sets that eligibility criteria. So, someone who may be eligible for a disability in a certain area in Kansas, for example, could come to Missouri, and they may not meet the same eligibility criteria. So, that's just a nuance that I think is important to note. But evaluations are completed, and that data is collected to make decisions and determinations about eligibility. It's important to note that Lee Summit R-7 is not considered significantly discrepant in the total IEPs as compared to the total population, or in race/ethnicity incidence rates, but we are continuing to review assessments and practices, because we want to ensure that we are working in a focused way and intentionally to decrease any discrepancies that exist. Our overall incidence rate is 9.02%, as compared to the state's overall incidence rate of 13.55%. So, I think that's a celebration, because we are, I would say, far below what the state number would be for students on IEPs compared to total enrollment population across the state. This is a big success highlight I want to show. Our graduation rate, our four-year graduation rate as a district, you see that big jump in the red bar there? We are, in 2019, we graduated 89.8% of our students with IEPs within that four-year timeframe, as compared to the state's average of 76.8%. So, it took a bit of a jump this year, and that's definitely something to celebrate, as you would want to see the opposite on the dropout rates graph over there, where there has been a steady decline in those numbers. This is our state assessment data snapshot. This is one way of looking at the state assessment data. We actually drill down into this much more closely within the School Psychologist and Instructional Evaluation Specialist Group, and our school district program coordinators have department meetings at their buildings, and they break down this information a little bit further with the staff as well, so they can see where their students are performing. Top 2 means proficient and advanced, and so this is a graph that is showing the number of students on IEPs that are scoring in the proficient and advanced ranges. This somewhat aligns, our district data somewhat aligns with state trends, but this is definitely an area of focus that we're working on. I think there are some connections to what I shared earlier about our core resource, and really looking at connecting to those state standards with the use of aligning with the core at the elementary level specifically. The other thing that we, that it's important to take note of is that these are students with a wide variety of disabilities. There's only a very small percentage of students who take an alternate form of state assessments, and so you are really looking at a global picture of students with disabilities in a broad range. A few strengths and celebrations to talk about. We do really have a strong organizational structure with support aligned within each zone and related service providers. We have comprehensive services that we offer to our students with disabilities, continuing to look at ways of increasing that access. And we have department staff that have really increased knowledge and understanding of best instructional practices. But our special education teachers, I want to give them a big shout-out, because there's also that balance of maintaining some compliance standards. It's not just providing the lesson planning and direct instruction to our students with some of the highest levels of need, but in addition to that, there are some requirements that we must meet in order to stay compliant. And so, our special education teachers are also the case managers and manage that paperwork. They have support, but they are truly the managers of the case of each of the students that they serve. We do focus on high-quality staff, providing high-quality services for our students and our families. It's our goal to meet the needs of all of our students and families in a timely manner. We use data to drive our continuous improvements, and we provide access to general curriculum, with that focus being this year to really align with new resources, specifically at the elementary level. We have also had several conversations with an instructional team to look at secondary resources and some different opportunities that we can provide, including courses that you recently approved with the peer-inclusive environment and the mentoring class for PE. So, those are some additional opportunities we're looking at at the secondary level. Some opportunities for improvement, based on some of the data shared and some additional data within the profile report and individual student progress. We are continuing to need to focus on inclusive practice, really looking at data review and analysis, and what our practices are and our process for identification, evaluation, and programming, and taking a deeper look at transition planning and resources for our families. We are going to continue to analyze and take actions to improve our state assessment data, and really be specific with our post-secondary planning, and ensure that we're aligning some of the coursework within our high schools and some of the community-based instruction that's taking place to really meet the needs of our students and what they plan to do after high school. Continuing to study the discrepant data within placement categories and within discipline. And- and exploring opportunities to offer more services within homeschool settings. We do have special programs offered at each of our middle and high schools for students with more social, emotional, behavioral needs or life skills and functional programming needs. At the elementary level, we have special program centers at different elementaries. They're housed in different places. We are exploring opportunities to really see how we can meet the needs of our students in their neighborhood schools so they can go to the school with the neighbors down the street. Also looking at ongoing professional learning and facilitated data analysis at the building level and the district level. So some evaluation questions that came up through this data review are how can we increase the number of students that are served in general education eighty percent or more of the time? How can we decrease discrepant data in that identification and discipline data? How can we increase the number of students on IEPs that are scoring in those top two categories? And then how can we really connect our families of students with disabilities to resource in advance that really will enhance their post-secondary planning experiences and our ability to prepare them for their future when they leave us from R seven? So these will be the areas of focus for next year, the upcoming program goals and action steps, really looking at inclusive practices remaining a focus, but digging more into data review and analysis for identification, evaluation and programming for students. That will encompass goal writing, that will encompass any personalized learning that needs to take place for students that may look different than other students to be able to prepare them for the future and/or equip them with the skills necessary so that they can be more successful in a general education classroom. And then also transition and resources. We're really looking at aligning with that MTSS work that's being done district-wide and how we can support and provide really, really some specific meaningful intervention when students are struggling and ensure that when we do have reason to suspect a disability, we have been able to try some other things before we get to a place where we have reason to suspect. In addition, really looking at professional learning and data analysis, developing programming that's appropriate for specific areas of eligibility, how we can look at service delivery models differently and instructional practices and really how we utilize formal and informal assessment data to drive programming for our kids. In addition, I'm exploring with the community-based instruction and pre-vocational programming teachers at the high school level, what we can do to really make our program in LSR seven robust and meet a lot of students' needs and how we can really plan for them to be individually prepared for their futures after they leave us. We're also working on tweaking and improving our website. There are some resources and things that we could be incorporating within our website for families to be able to have some quick access to some area agencies that they may want to connect with. We also host a resource fair as we have done in the past. We had some growth with that this last year that I also want to highlight. The team really put together a more robust resource fair this fall where we increased from the number of resources at sixteen in two thousand eighteen, we had forty resource tables in two thousand nineteen. And we started expanding to really invite community organizations that could support students and their families with disabilities, all the way starting at early childhood level through age twenty-one and beyond. So those are a couple of highlights that we'll continue to enhance. So just want to summarize and conclude with our focus really being on maintaining high expectations and meeting each student's needs and maximizing their potential.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Judy has a question.
Sorry, I don't want to put you on the spot, but I just have a question on the chart that has the identification data. I would like to see on that chart, I would like to see the actual numbers on that. And then I also would like to see some state comparison if we could get that data from statewide.
Let me take a look at that. If memory serves on the DESI profile data report, they only give us our numbers, but let me do a little bit of digging and see if I can find that.
I would be interested in that.
Absolutely.
Yes, first of all, I would just like to say thank you, Dr. Mathis, and thank you to all of our teachers of our special ed students. Holds a little special place in my heart because my mom was a special ed teacher and a reading, special reading teacher. And I know how much good those teachers do for kids. Not that all of our teachers are great, but it takes a special person to teach special people. And I also wanted to say that many of you, when it's set up to age twenty-one, I bet some of you were surprised at that if you didn't know that we had students who were up to age twenty-one. And I think if you've never visited our great program over at Miller Park, you need to see if you can visit that program because those teachers do wonderful things with those students who are up to age twenty-one. And I was able to go to their chili cook-off about a week ago and they, those kids are some great cooks. They had, I think, four or five different chilies that they had and then about the same in desserts. And then they received awards and they were so excited about getting those trophies and those awards for their cooking. But, I mean, they do more than just cook. I mean, those teachers are teaching them great life skills. I went and visited the farmer's market in the fall before it ended and they have their own booth. They make goods for the farmer's market. I bought some of their soap, which I actually use in my bathroom. It's great and some of their other products which they make. And so I'm just very, very impressed with those teachers, but thank you very much to all.
Thank you. We have great staff.
And Mike?
A quick question. I know I'm putting you on the spot. On slide nine of fourteen, state assessment data. Run through that real quick. Year-to-years, blue, yellow, red, top two percent. This is grades, top two percent. I guess I'm curious what those three, district, state, district, state. And those are measuring what?
The percentage of students who took that assessment that are on IEPs and scored either proficient or advanced.
Okay. And the trend is?
The trend is currently declining and it aligns with the same state decline that you can see they're kind of side by side, but that is, that's not an excuse. We're still looking at it.
Yeah. And this is part of just changes maybe in the math?
I think, yes.
I mean, it's been a difficult, regardless of IEP or not.
Yes, if you compared this to data of students who are not on IEPs, you would see some declines in scores as well.
Right, okay. That's what I thought, but all right.
Mr. Allen, I'd also point back to something Dr. Mathis said at the beginning of her presentation, which is really, we have a different philosophical approach on how we identify students with disabilities. And I think that's really important. We go through an extensive data collection process and make sure we identify those students that need it the most, whereas most of the districts in the state of Missouri use a discrepancy model where the IQ, you have to have a pretty solid IQ. And then there's a gap between cognitive ability and achievement. And that's the largest category in the state of Missouri, specific learning disabilities. So we are intentionally serving a different population of students, more global deficits.
Awesome, thank you. This is a business meeting, so, but you can come up after the meeting if you have a question? Is that good? Or we could do a public comment next month?
I would be happy to talk with you after the meeting.
Ma'am, I'm the parliamentarian and it's not our policy to answer questions from the floor at this time. So we thank you for your question, but if you could talk with Dr. Mathis as soon as the meeting's over, we would love it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ryan?
Dr. Mathis, just a few questions here. Oddly, one of them's going to kind of hit right there. Can you, and I'm going to approach it from a parent perspective here. So can you tell us kind of what is the best way for parents and guardians to be able to advocate for their kids who are receiving IEPs, 504s, those kinds of things to get a successful outcome when parents and guardians sometimes feel like those needs are not being met within the building? And that's not to say that the teachers aren't doing what they're supposed to be doing, but as some people probably know, there can be a difference of opinion on the services that are being provided and what the parent and/or guardian feels should be being provided to the student or may not be provided at that particular point. What's the best path forward for parents and guardians?
Sure. I think first, if ever there's a question about what's going on with your students' IEP, I think the first go-to would be with the case manager, the teacher who is really helping to facilitate that that programming is being implemented. I think that's always the first go-to person because they're most directly involved. If a parent or guardian does not feel like their needs are being met by talking with that person, there is, depending on what the issue is, if it's specific to the special education being delivered through the IEP, I would probably recommend reaching out to the zone program coordinator. That person is an administrator over that zone and they can help to facilitate that conversation and process. Sometimes parents and guardians of students on IEPs have questions about some things that are happening, but they're not necessarily related to the IEP, but it's about the school. And so I would always refer to the building principal in that case. They can always be helpful and even guiding in the right direction. But parents are always able to call an IEP team. They are welcome to ask for the IEP team to meet at any time. And so I really feel like if there is a concern with programming, that's probably the best step. I can always support as well, but I'm a little farther removed than the other people more directly involved in developing the IEP.
I have a couple more, sorry. Okay, you knew I would, I'm sorry. Oh, okay. So that's good because sometimes, you know, I think we miss in the order of how, and sometimes those of us who are advocating on behalf of kids with special needs, myself included, you know, we miss steps, right? And it'd be nice, I think, and this kind of ties into this second question, is can you tell us how we could get more streamlined or some kind of way that we can get those of us who are dealing with IEPs and 504s with our kids, how we can streamline that process and receive more frequent progress reports without us having to consistently call the school and/or teacher?
So I would say we do provide, anytime upon request, we can provide progress and information, any data that might lend itself to what kind of IEP goal progress is being made. In 504, not necessarily would there be progress to be reported because that would be more the accommodations plans being implemented, but again, those meetings could be requested as needed by a parent. But always available would be that progress data anytime a parent wanted to see information. But we do provide IEP goal progress in alignment with when the school reports progress and grades. And so that's kind of our streamlined approach is that it's parallel to when everybody's receiving progress, you get also that specific progress related to IEP goals. We have also done some special requests for different parents that want some additional information. We've set up a schedule of a different time schedule in between those quarterly progress reports or semesterly progress reports. We've set up meetings just to review data and goal progress. And that's always available upon request.
Okay, so number three. What's, can you give us like, what are kind of the two, let's go with two, two of the biggest hurdles that you would like parents to be able to help with, with the school to make things go smoother? What can parents and guardians do to help the school so that there isn't as much, and I'm just being flat honest, there's not as much friction between those plans and trying to get them implemented?
Okay. I would say asking questions. I always want parents to feel like they can ask questions. I think sometimes in the context of an IEP meeting or a 504 meeting, it can feel fairly intimidating to a parent and guardian because all the people around the table, this is the speak we speak on a regular basis and not necessarily is it the speak that the parents and guardians are speaking on a regular basis. So I think sometimes, just like in any organization, if that's what you're used to talking about, you can sometimes get away from that and go a little bit faster than you should with the people that you're with. And so I do think asking questions in the context of the meeting. I think really just if there are other parts of input, we do ask in every IEP meeting for additional parent concerns that we can incorporate into the IEP. Don't feel like you have to wait for an IEP meeting to ask questions and check for understanding. It's totally okay to contact that case manager anytime you have questions. The building principals are always willing to help or facilitate or steer you in the right direction and those program coordinators. We don't want people walking away feeling like they don't know or understand what's been presented to them. And so I think sometimes it can feel fairly intimidating in that context, I think, but really just asking questions and knowing that we don't necessarily have all the answers all the time either, but we're happy to help figure it out.
Last one, then I'll be done. Is there any kind of onboarding process for kids coming into our elementary schools and especially their families to maybe have a dedicated time where they can, where they're not having to be in with the general school population of touring the school, but they could come separately to talk to those staff members who are going to be working with their kids?
Yes.
Explain that because I'm not sure that a lot of people know that we can do that. So there you go.
Sure. Are you talking new to district or are you talking new because they're moving from elementary to middle or?
Or from, or from early childhood to elementary, all of the transitional phases, yes.
Yes. So we do hold transition meetings to discuss those changes that would be pending for the IEP, one, early childhood to elementary school. One big one is the amount of time they attend during the school day. The number of minutes that they're at school is a significant change already. So those are some of the changes that would be discussed within the context of that transition meeting, where their, where their needs may be best met, whether that be via a special program classroom or through a cross-categorical classroom, whether they're in a class within a class program with their transitioning from middle to high school, whatever that may look like, those are all discussed during the transition meeting. In addition, we do offer to families as appropriate because we know that based on the students' needs or based on request from families, we can set up private tours at a time where it's not just everybody goes at transition day and so do they. We can set up some other things. There are, I just approved some field trips just the other day for some trips from an elementary school to a middle school to go check it out because we want to give them a little bit more time to get acclimated to the setting.
I'm not done, I'm sorry. I thought I was done, but I'm not actually done.
Of course.
Now, I can say this last question quickly. So our goal is to get kids into generalized education more. What are the supports that we're going to be able to give our teachers on a continued basis to be able to accommodate those particular students?
So I would say we want to get kids into general education more as appropriate because we also want it to be meaningful participation. So I do want to make that statement. So that would be an individual decision, what that looks like in terms of the amount of time that they spend in the general classroom. When students are spending additional time in the classroom, we do make sure that regular classroom teachers are aware of the IEP and the needs of the student and what those accommodations and modifications are for students, what that means in terms of when it's time for a test or how often we need to check for understanding or maybe provide some close proximity at times, whatever that may be, that they need to be more successful in the classroom. But with that, if we are increasing for a specific student, we are generally talking about that in an individualized way with teachers. I would also add- I would also add that as we talk about, if we start serving more students in their homeschool settings, that's something that we would work with staff meetings and provide some professional development about what that would look like for a school that doesn't maybe currently host a special program, how the students can be successful and the staff can be most successful in that setting.
I really am done now. Okay, good. All right, no other questions? So we will move, thank you so much, Dr. Mathis.
Thank you.
You're amazing. We're going to move down to 12.01 Career in Tech Education Program Evaluation and 12.02 Facilities and Maintenance Project Update. We had written reports. Does anybody have any questions on the wall at West? Do we have any questions? All right. Oh, okay. Jackie?
Okay, thank you. This is regarding the Career and Technical Education Report. I don't know if anybody's here tonight. Oh, sorry, I didn't see. Mrs. Booth, do you want to come to the mic? While you're moving there, thank you. It was a very helpful report to be able to review. I was at the, I was the district boards representative at the Kaufman Real World Learning Retreat last year, and it was really a great program, and I'm really glad you guys are carrying forward on the program. It looked like from the report, are we about 500 students in this program?
Oh, we have more than, well, it depends on what you're talking about as a career in technical education student. As far as 500, that's a, we're a little less than that on concentrators, so that would be a student who takes three credits within a pathway. I would say altogether in Career and Tech Ed, we have more than 500 students between the three high schools and Summit Technology Academy.
One of the things that I do hear a little bit of discussion about is capacity. Are we at, do we need more capacity? What are you guys feeling like right now?
Again, depends on the building. We do, like at least Summit West, I would say we are at capacity. We have to turn some of our students away from some of those programs because of our classroom sizes or how we're limited in the shop area. In other schools, we have room for growth, so it differs from building to building.
All right. Thank you very much, I appreciate that. I know this is an important area that the broad community is interested in because of college cost, debt, and having kids that are ready to move right into a career opportunity, and that's clearly this pathway. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions about those two written reports? Seeing none, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.